I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. 4.01, the superintendent's report, which will be given tonight by Assistant Superintendent Mr. Darren Lokeema.
Thank you. I'd first like to start off by continuing tradition that the superintendent always does, and that is to welcome our 12th grade students here, or part, or here as part of their participation in government class, to recognize the fact that you've come a long way, and with only just less than eight short months to go, you'll be walking across a stage and greeting everyone up here, receiving your diplomas. It's a great time, please, just to remind you not to lose focus, but have some fun. It's, you know, the next chapter in your life is soon to begin, and we're very proud of you. Also like to amend to everyone, though it goes without need, that tomorrow is election day. Also, a historical time for us and our country. We have six polling locations in our district. So even though we'll be having superintendent conference day with no children, we will be having public access to many of our schools for voting. As far as, as far as the superintendent conference day for tomorrow goes, I'd like to share that we're all very proud of the hard work that our professional development team has put into our EdCamp forum. It's the style of professional development that we're doing tomorrow. It's the third of such events where it's all participant-led professional development, where we all get to learn from each other and all grow from that, from those discussions. And also...
4.02, spotlight on program.
Thank you. Manufacturing Day was an event that took place on October 7th. And it was, it was an imitation brought to us by Global Boundaries, our community partner, Downhoof, who's taken over the Ivy M. Fischel location, where we were invited to, invited to bring our kids in and learn a lot about the assembly process, to conduct experiments and talk with the engineers in their organization. And I'm proud to say that we had 70 to 80 students from John Jay, 70 to 80 students from RCK, and probably about 60 or so students from Brinkerhoff. So we had over 200 students that were brought in as a, as part of a morning field trip. It was a tremendous event. There was other school districts there as well. And we thought it would be nice to share some of the insights that the students had as part of their experience, and hope to make this a tradition, an annual tradition, which is in line with our strategic plan to reach out and have community connections, to seek more, more additional ways that we can have relations with such partners in our community. And with that, we have Mrs. Watkins, who will lead us in that presentation or review from the students.
Thank you, Mr. Lokeema. So while the students are speaking, there is a slideshow presentation of the photographs that were taken throughout that event. Those are also posted on the website. If you go to WCMF, Manufacturing Day is listed there, so you can review that again, just to see the different activities. So this presentation, we also had two students that were going to be speaking tonight from Brinkerhoff, but their schedules, they're very busy schedules, those sixth graders. So they weren't here, aren't able to be here. They were both very upset that they weren't able to be here because they were thrilled to share their insights. So I, if, they were going to consider putting those in writing, so if they do, I will pass them along to the board too, if you can review that. But without further ado, we have students here from Miss Kim's class at RCK, who will start us out, and then I will turn it over to Mr. Butler. And basically, their, their direction from me was to just share about this event, so they could share what opened their eyes to Manufacturing Day, what did they not expect, what would they see, and possible improvements for this day, and to listen how they do. I can't wait to hear what they think. So we'll start with Kelly.
So what I really liked about Manufacturing Day was that it wasn't just a field trip for high school students. They were able to bring in those sixth graders from Brinkerhoff, and get them interested in science and science careers like engineering, and all these different aspects that they might not have known about. And even though they weren't doing the same tasks that we were, they were still able to learn about the science, the careers in science, the engineering. They were able to learn about teamwork, patience, and that it's okay to fail and make mistakes, to learn from it and be better. And I also just really liked how we got to go around and talk to some of the engineers from Global Boundaries, and kind of get their insights, and get to talk to them a little bit. And how the field trip didn't really end when we left the building. We got the chance to get the information from some of the, from some of the workers there, and get the option to be able to talk to them, and get some more, like, insight to their career, and see what engineering really all about. And I liked how we had that option to kind of get more information, and not just go to our teachers and see what they felt it was. We got to go to somebody, just to experience it on a daily basis.
Maurice Lokeema from RCK.
What I really liked about the Global Boundaries was that I won, personally, I won the engineering. And this was a great opportunity to go and talk to all the engineers. And I really liked the windmill project, because it was able to teach you how to construct the windmill, to be cost efficient, and to compete with your classmates, to figure out who can make the most cost efficient and efficient windmill. And my brother was in the group too, so it was more of a competition. It was great seeing those sixth graders being able to experience the engineering and all the sciences at such a young age compared to us when we were juniors, and we were already thinking about colleges. And they're just thinking about what they're gonna do tomorrow. And I thought the electroplating was great too, because it showed the chemistry that happens every day, that everybody does, and that we only do in classes. And this is a real career, and everybody can be open to it. And it's great for the sixth graders to see this, and for us to be able to have the opportunity to go and do this. It was just a great field trip.
Now I'd like to invite Mr. Butler up, with his students from John Jay.
Jeff Butler, Department of Technology, Engineering at John Jay High School. I just want to thank you for giving my engineering design and development class the opportunity to go next door and anchor Global Boundaries. You're gonna talk about their experience, but as an instructor, I think it's great for them to get involved in the community. Since National Manufacturing Day at Global Boundaries, they've been back inside my classroom, and Dr. Furbaum's, to actually work with the students and mentor our students to help them possibly make a career choice that was...
So as previously mentioned, we went to Manufacturing Day at Global Boundaries. And we got through a lot of really cool things, like we got to listen to the board of engineers that are all there knowing that we're interested in what we're doing, because it's in the field of study that we're in the classes for that gets us to come. And you also got to work on a couple of events that got to work you with teamwork, and you had to be able to listen, you had to be involved with the people that are with you instead of just having to kind of just do it yourself. It put you in the situations instead of just being, this is what the situations are gonna be like. It was really helpful.
One thing that I personally enjoyed about the Manufacturing Day that I kind of wish we had had more of was there was a short period of time at the end of the day, where we kind of just got to go around and talk to engineers who worked there, and have like a one-on-one conversation. And as a person in late high school going into college, I got to talk to a girl who went to Cornell, and I got to have a conversation with her about how she kind of transitioned from high school into college, into getting a job. And I felt like that would really help me, and really let me, and I kind of wish I had more one-on-one conversations like that with people.
One thing that I wish happened when we were at Global Boundaries was more personal tours, like throughout the campus, to show us what happened during manufacturing, different steps to be able to see what went into manufacturing, all the different chips and stuff that they made at the factory.
While we're, we're at Global Boundaries, we were able to listen to a board of engineers and learn where they came from, and like how they got to be an engineer at Global Boundaries, and their college experience, and their previous job experience. It was very interesting.
As, as far as activities go, they put, Global Boundaries managed to put a fun spin on the activities we did. For example, we had a airborne airplane, we had to build a paper airplane and throw it. Although it did seem kind of childish, they put a fun spin on it. And they taught us that if you use a conveyor belt, so just kind of the assembly line, it'll go much quicker. So although some of the, um... Tasks, yeah. Some of the tasks they did were meaningless. It actually showed us a lot, helped us out, and it could definitely prove to be helpful in the real world.
What I found really interesting about this event is I loved the emphasis on teamwork throughout the event. Because usually in all, like, the engineering class you take is just like math and science. You don't get into the social aspect of it, and how important it is to utilize everyone's ability. So I just really enjoyed how much emphasis that put on that.
Hi, this is Ray Zero. Just a quick sum of everybody else's comments. We got to do, teamwork was a big part of this. We learned that we could work alone and add all of our sums up when we built the airplanes, and we got about 28 airplanes built. Then when we worked as a team on a conveyor belt system, we made about 43 airplanes. It was about 50%, 50% increase in production. And that shows us that both teamwork and conveyor belts are very successful. But other than that, I think that the field trip was very important for engineers alone, because a student in high school for math and, and science and any other thing, they get a lot of hands-on stuff through science classes and math classes. But as an engineer, you only get four years if you take all the electives in, for all the project leave-away courses. So you only got four years of learning about and doing a couple of projects. But we never even really get to see what goes on in the outside world. In the Global Boundaries field trip, we were able to kind of see exactly what an engineer would do. But as we said before, it might have been helpful if we got to actually see a little bit of them. We got a little bit of a tour around the facility. By going on the tour, we could actually see them working, that would really help us. But overall, I think that it would have been, it was a great opportunity, and that we should continue on and continue the field trip for years to come. Thank you.
So again, just thank you to all the students who made arrangements to come again tonight, and share their feedback, and just to let the board know that we're continuing the conversations with Global Boundaries, and what we can do even in the spring with our teachers to help prepare them for this event next fall. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's give him a round of applause. Thank you to the students for taking the time to come out and share this with us. You know, we look forward to trying to bring more opportunities for you in, in the various things that our community has to offer. And that will conclude the superintendent's report.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is the public hearing on the Smart Schools Bond Act Implementation Plan Number Three. This is your opportunity, if anyone in the audience has comments they wish to make, the usual rules for coming to the microphone apply. So please state your name and confine your comments to three minutes. Anyone? Seeing no one, I'd like a motion to close the public hearing. Okay, thank you. Mr. Lumia, second. Mrs. Pelton, all those in favor? Mr. Slow Shower, Mrs. Karat, are you voting? Unanimous. All right. 5.03, approval of Smart Schools Bond Act Implementation Plan Number Three.
Resolved that the bond... Be it resolved that the Wapinjus Central School District has developed the Smart Schools Bond Act Implementation Plan Number Three, has presented the plan to the board on September 26th, 2016, has advertised for public input in the district's webs, on the district's website for 30 days, and conducted a public hearing on this date, November 7th, 2016. And therefore be it resolved that the Wapinjus Board of Education hereby approves the Smart Schools Bond Act Implementation Plan Number Three as presented. And be it further resolved that the Wapinjus Board of Education hereby authorizes superintendent of schools, or is designated, to submit the Wapinjus Central School District Smart Schools Bond Act Implementation Plan Number Three to the New York State Education Department for review and approval.
Do we have a motion? Mrs. Pelton, second. Mrs. Karat, discussion. Mr. Slow Shower.
I know we've received notification that the New York State portal was activated to begin the application process for reimbursement. Do we have any updates as of yet?
We submitted the, for all funds that had been expended two weeks ago Friday, and we received confirmation that it was received, but we have not heard any additional information at this time.
Mr. Lokeema?
I did attend a conference on the topic at St. Louis Falls about, like, it was a day or two after Ms. Randall submitted our application for reimbursement. And the state was there and was happy to report that their, that their portal application for reimbursements is working better than they expected. And rather than a 90-day turnaround, they're hoping something inside of six weeks. So we will hopefully see a check rather soon.
And the other discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Mr. Slow Shower. 6.01, public comments on agenda items. The public comment period is a time slot set aside on the agenda for citizens to address the Board of Education. The Open Meetings Law does not require that citizens be allowed to participate and speak at Board of Education meetings other than public hearings. The law specifies that the public has a right to attend board meetings except for executive sessions. The procedure for public comment is outlined in Board Policy 1230, Citizen Participation. A total of 30 minutes is set aside for public comment at the beginning and end of the meeting. The maximum time allowed for any one speaker is three minutes. Public comments at the beginning of the meeting are limited to items on the agenda. Persons who wish to participate in the public comment portion of the meeting must state their name and the specific topic about which they wish to speak. As speakers must limit comments to issues appropriate for public discussion. Compliments or complaints about student discipline, specific student issues, or personnel must not be addressed during public comment. Interruption of board discussion is not permitted. In the interest of civility and respect for different points of view, outbursts from the audience, applause, or other types of disturbances or disruptions are not permitted. Under no circumstances will booing be tolerated. The Board of Education recognizes its responsibility to hear and respond to public comment. As stated in Board Policy 1230, the Board is not able to answer questions at the meetings, but welcomes your statements. Any questions from the public should be submitted through the use of the public comment form, which may be obtained online or at the desk with the district clerk. Responses will be provided within two business days on the district's Public Comment Responses page, so that everyone may receive the information. Does anyone wish to speak now?
Hi, good evening, Warren. I am Dana White. Um, agenda item 7.10. This is a transfer of funds from special ed over to mandated blood testing. I'm kind of confused as to how that's being moved. Special ed education budget line items I thought were specific, so I'm not understanding how that can be moved over so easily. I would appreciate an explanation on that. And then item number 7.13, the health services rate. I, I don't understand what that is at all. I'd like an explanation as to what that is. And then lastly, the change of bus times. Again, I'm still not following why there's a need to even do it at this point in time. And further, there is rumblings in the high schools about adding a ninth period, and I'm kind of confused as to how that's going to work out with the change in the bus times. I'd like further explanation as to how that's gonna pan out for students coming up next year. Thank you.
Are there any other comments at this time? Seeing none, we will move on to 6.02, communications and announcements received by the Board of Education. Start over here with Mrs. Pelton. Mr. Slow Shower. Mrs. Karat.
Yes, I was able to attend and donate my blood on the 27th of October at the Little Doctor's Blood Drive at Wapinjus Junior High here. And I received a wonderful thank you note, or thank you card, that was done by a seventh grader in the yellow team. So my thanks go out to a very well, well-done blood drive. I don't know the statistics on how much and how, what the participation was, but when I got here at about 5 o'clock, it was still steady and all the way through the hour that I was there. And Rose Ellen Hart, I know, spends a lot of time pulling these together, so thanks to her. And just a quick good luck to the RCK girls swim team and John Jay Cross Country. They are attending the state championships this weekend in Shinango, Shinango Valley, I believe. It says Shinango State Park. And so best of luck to them. I know they'll represent our school as well.
Thank you. Mr. Ruben.
Thank you. I also had the opportunity to come to the Wapinjus Junior High School, donate some blood. Don't have much left. My wife tells me that all the time. Wapinjus, Dan Mike Junior High School had their blood drive. I went there just to observe and see what was happening. Kudos, by the way, to both of those schools. It's great that those kids come and have such a positive impact in the health of the community. Is that the Community Communications Committee? Dutchess County School Board Meeting, I attended that, and I was a representative of both these. Both these Facilities Planning Committee, along with Mrs. Cowan, I attended. We were interviewed for a coverings project. That was very interesting. I had the opportunity to attend both senior high schools today this weekend for their plays, John Jay and RCK plays. And I will say that I'm very impressed with the quality of the plays that they put out. I am very impressed with the level of performance that this district does in general. The kids, kudos to them. Along with, Mrs. Cowan was there, I think Mr. Lumia at RCK. There was a author's talk for Buys Alberto, I think his name was, Into the Beautiful North. That was a great, great presentation. There were three schools there. Arlington, I think, was there, as well as John Jay and RCK. I participated in the drug awareness forum hosted by the PTA Council. And lastly, the superintendent's budget form.
Mrs. Goodman. Mr. Lumia.
Mr. Ruben, I'm surprised I took your blood, but thank you for, for donating your blood. In any event, much I wanted to say, Mr. Ruben took my thunder away, but I do like to congratulate still the RCK production came to you with you. The set was outstanding, and the new performers, I'd be congratulated by their flawless performance. Once again, thanks to all who involved, especially to Mr. Wall, my husband Dennis, and director Tanya Clifton. I also enjoyed the author, his presentation. It was at RCK High School, Arlington High School, as well as John Jay, RCK students attended. And the author recounted, many of his stories are based on books. Many books were based on his family experience. He was very, very, very entertaining to listen to. At this point, I'd like to take a moment of silence for both the members of the superintendent's family, as well as Dr. Fuam's family.
Mr. Coletta.
Thank you, Mr. Ruben, for mentioning things I attended. Unfortunately, I didn't get to go to that author talk, although I read the book and didn't want to go, but I... No, that, thank you, thank you for assuming I was there, but I was in...
You were in every place.
I know, just about every place. But I couldn't clone myself that day, and I was at the New York State Schools Boards Convention in Buffalo, which I will talk about a little later. But yes, that was very interesting when we got involved in that little discussion with the doctoral candidates from New Falls. And the plays, as both Mr. Lumia and Mr. Ruben said, were outstanding. You can't take it with you here. Everyone, from my husband and myself, to my eight-year-old grandson, thought it was terrific. And one at John Jay was wonderful too. I only wish they had had packed houses each time. This is a wonderful opportunity for members of the community. If you want to go to live theater that's almost professional quality for very low price, and delicious refreshments sold during the intermission for very low cost. This is the place to come. People go all the way to New York City, and they don't know what they have right here in Wapinjus.
The clean works of Shakespeare, John Jay.
A bridge, yes. Yes, Mr. Ruben.
Just a quick comment. Of all the players I've gone through, RCK, John Jay, these kids are professionals, in my opinion. In fact, some of the players that they have performed, I've seen them on Broadway, and our kid threw in for a job. So as far as I'm concerned, they are professionals.
Yes, they're very good, very good.
Not poison or anything?
No, 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 no.
At this time, we have committee reports. And I'm going to go around, and those, at the first business meeting of each month, we have committee reports from those committees that have met during that month. So just because you don't hear from a committee doesn't mean that they aren't doing things, but they didn't have a meeting as such, or didn't do something that they need to report to the board. So first of all, let's see. Mr. Ruben, would you tell us about Communications Committee?
The Communications Committee, that, I thought that was a very good meeting that we had. There were two items that we really are, there's still works in progress. We're discussing and working on a communications plan for the district. And we're still working on updating the district's logo. I will say one other thing, that in terms of meeting for agenda, we're gonna expand that, and I still have to work that out. But we're gonna expand the agenda-setting subcommittee to include a member from the public.
Legislative Action Committee, Mr. Slow Shower.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee reconvened on Thursday night, October 20th, to formulate our response... The committee reconvened on Thursday night, October 20th, to formulate our response for the local assistance, oh, excuse me, not response, but a letter to our, the draft of a letter to our local politicians with regards to the local assistance plan. This letter is presented to the board later on in the agenda for review and discussion. I want to thank all of the committee members who worked tirelessly, not even at the meeting, but those who met outside of the committee. Trustee Goodman also met with one of our committee members on their own time in order to formulate a rough, rough, rough draft, I can call it that. Then we received input from all committee members. I also want to commend our students that appeared that night, who gave some very, very fascinating information, and I hope that they will continue to contribute through the committee. Their perspective on things that are going on in the schools, and how different things are affecting them with regards to standards, curriculum, and different aspects, it was very enlightening and very educational to hear their point of view. At this point, the letter is ready, and hopefully the board will review it, and we can move forward. Thank you.
Mr. Lumia, the Capital Improvement Committee.
We had a meeting on November's.
November 2nd. Mr. Bros, as you may be aware, there's been problems with some of our schools. The district received results back from Bassar Kinry, Old Royal, the Chief Road Elementary School. Maintenance replaced all faucets, Valston Osses. The Osses are doing, I use them, are labeled, led free. Just received results from Fisker Plains and break off elementary schools. Next step is to retest. All elementary schools were tested before the end of September. Junior High, High School were tested before the end of October. Phil Temke, our Rhinebeck Architect, reported on some of the Phase 1 projects, which include the RCK High School sports field and cover the ceilings. John J. High School sports field, main office and cover the ceilings. Wappinghurst Junior High Windows, Kaheh, pavement, walls and carriero ceilings. Jim Evans, James Evans, paved and wall cover, and step floor finishes. Kilo, paved and walls, carpet, floor. Myers-Marzal Elementary, paved and covered the ceilings. And Bassar Road, paved, walls and carriero floors. The Phase 2 project, many, many of them, which you can read online, despite the Smaschool Bond Act, District White Door, hardware upgrade, all 14 buildings are complete with interior locks. Jim Evans Elementary School, there's simply a canopy has to be finished. Work is being done after hours on carbon monoxide detectors. Good news of John J. High School water system improvement, the district's work with the Town of East Fiskil. Town of Fiskil has the Village of Fiskil to hook up to the municipal water supply. The carriero will be used strictly for irrigation and sports fields. The district's work with the Town of East Fiskil to hook up municipal sewer system as well. The solid drinking this month project will coincide with the town project. The RCK Press Box at the last board meeting, PBS Construction, also ordered the project. Keeping existence sidewalks to contract the plant to complete as much as possible depending on the weather condition. The project is scheduled to be completed by the summer of 2017. Work is being coordinated with Central Hudson. Gas is going to provide power to lights and fields and walkway. And a request, at that meeting, a request was done, was made to Mr. Lukima, to run a cable out of the new press box for network connectivity. The 2013 capital project, of which there have been significant savings, almost practically complete. And last but not least, we interviewed a representative from Engineering Solutions, because we were interested in another energy performance contract, which would include solar energy and other possible ways that the district can save money. As I stated in our last Board of Education meeting, the energy life performance contract saved the district over $500,000, which will be used to pay for the last capital project. Hopefully, a study conducted by this firm will enable us to have an authentic ones whose savings will pay for the district. Again, much of this information is on the district webpage, so if anybody is interested in further details, please look at the district webpage. Thank you.
The Dutchess School Boards Association, which Mr. Rubin and Mr. Coletta and I attended. Mr. Coletta is our representative. Mr. Coletta.
So this past Thursday, I attended the meeting with Mrs. Callen, as she mentioned, Mr. Rubin. The Deputy Superintendent of the High Park School District, Aviva Kafka, presented information on their experience implementing their universal pre-K through a grant from New York State Education Department. They seem to be very happy with the program, and they, although she did mention that they did have some initial, I guess, lessons learned, but they're hoping that the funding continues so that they can continue that program. On December 1st, at the next meeting, Dr. Rick Timms from the Statewide School Financial Consortium is going to be presenting information on state aid analysis. I had a chance to see Dr. Timms present information in Middletown about two years ago, and I would highly recommend any board member that could attend this meeting, do so if they can.
Thank you. Mr. Rubin.
At that meeting, she did say that it was universal pre-K, but they cannot take all the students. They had about a half a dozen that they couldn't take, if I recall. So universal would not really.
Mr. Rubin, do you have any reports from BOSI's? And Mrs. Pelton, Mrs. Karat, was there anything from the PTA? Thank you. 6.04, the New York State School Boards Association Convention, bylaws and amendments. If you recall, we discussed those, and on the website is stated the way in which the members of this board wished me to vote as their representative in Buffalo. On the website, there will be the response, the results, so that you can see exactly how it was resolved. I could say that the way this board wanted was the way the vote went on everything. There were a couple resolutions that were withdrawn by the people who had presented them, but other than that, it went according to the way you had indicated. So if there's a little bit on that, the first, the proposed bylaw amendment to expand membership by the Board of Directors to include someone from the New York State Caucus of Black School Board members, received a majority, but not the two-thirds vote. This board had opposed it, and enough other people agreed, so it was not done, since the feeling those who opposed it was that the school board members are there as representatives of their areas within the state, and that to give special positions to different other groups would change the whole method of representation on the state board. The other things that came up that people might feel strongly one way or the other was the issue of asking the state legislature to require that all bargaining units pay a certain percentage of their health insurance, and as Mrs. Crandall had advised us, that this was not a good idea, since it's better to have flexibility in negotiation rather than having the state take control of more aspects of our contracts. I did pass that information on to the entire Assembly, and they voted as we felt was a good idea. There was feeling that we needed to be paid all the money the state owes us, and those resolutions went through. And since... Right, no, surprise, right. I think all the school boards feel that we should be getting our full state aid. So if anybody had a question about any of the other particular issues that came up, I'd be happy to give you some description of it. I don't want to go through almost 30 different topics unless people really want to talk about it now. So tell me which ones you're interested in. Mrs. Karat.
I noticed the last three. We all were pretty much in the affirmative with those resolutions, and they were all voted down.
Okay, well, what happened with that was that there was discussion on the subject of, let's see, Resolution 22? There was a discussion on the way that the current policies and what we're lobbying for already, and it was decided that these issues were already covered in other resolutions that have been passed. And when a resolution is passed by the New York State School Boards Association, it remains in effect for five years. So it only comes up before the convention again when it expires after five years. So these were basically still in the things that had been approved over the last four years. The one about the New York State School Board, Number 23, that the New York State School Boards Association should provide all members with an annual report, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. The feeling was that it was, that they already were getting sufficient information, and the treasurer explained to great length of what information was there. And 24, allowing school districts to provide in Campford the required 180 days online instruction for those scheduled school days in which schools are unable to open due to adverse weather, utility failure, and other unanticipated emergencies. It was pointed out that for the most part, if you have one of those emergencies, you've lost your connections for online instruction, so it wouldn't be able to be done. And also, if the commissioner is able to waive the 180-day requirement in case it's impossible to make it up. I had personal experience of that. When I was first teaching, I was in Western New York during Hurricane Agnes, which took place during Regents Week, and they basically forgave the remaining days of that week, including the Regents exams, for those students who had still not taken them since those last three days in school. It was impossible to hold school, and they had trouble getting the schools cleaned up for September opening, let alone adding on more days. So in those cases, the commissioner can waive it, so that's why it was felt to be unnecessary. Are there any other questions about specific needs? Mr. Lumia.
Is it possible to have the actual state results? Is it possible to list the actual results of the state where they voted at each of those resolutions?
Yeah, I asked Mrs. Pedro if we could get that up on the website, and I believe we're working on that, right? Mrs. Pedro? Yes, so it will be up there for everybody to see, so you'll see the whole thing. Yes, Mrs. Pelton? It's up there already, see? There, very good. All right, excellent. Thank you. All right, aside from the actual business meeting, there were many workshops which were illuminating. There was one I attended on how to define success for students apart from tests, with some wonderful ideas and a very inspiring talk. There were some discussions of roundtables about discussions about better board functioning. There were a number of interesting ideas, and we have the material that we can get online, and we're going to be passing that, Mrs. Pedro and I are going to be passing that on to the entire senior staff. And if anybody is interested in any particular one, I think we also have the convention schedule available to board members. If there's a workshop you'd like to see the printouts for and the PowerPoints, we'll try to get those for you. There were so many, I don't want to go through them all now because it would take up half the meeting. Are there any other questions? 7.01, Consent Agenda Resolution. Is there anyone who wishes to remove anything from the consent agenda? Mr. Slow Shower.
710.
Anyone else? Mr. Lumia.
Senate 12, please.
Any other?
Resolved that the Board of Education does hereby approve the following consent agenda items as stated. 7.02, 7.03, 7.04, 7.05, 7.06, 7.07, 7.08, 7.09, 7.11, 7.13, and 7.14.
Do we have a motion? Mrs. Goodman, second. Mr. Lumia. All those in favor? Unanimous. 7.10.
7.10, resolved that the Board of Education does hereby approve the following budget transfers as detailed in memo dated October 21, 2016, from the Executive Director for Finance and Business Development to the Superintendent of Schools.
Do we have a motion? Mr. Lumia, second. Mr. Rubin, discussion. Mr. Slow Shower.
Just a clarification again with regards to the particular transfer with money coming from the special ed tuition, which is the line item to cover just the mandated testing. We're utilizing those funds, and does that have a negative effect on the special education budget, line items in the special education?
Sure. Just this afternoon, we had a superintendent's forum on a budget conversation, and during that conversation, we discussed estimates. Estimates are used during a budget process, so after speaking with Executive Director Zip with regard to special education needs, that those funds, we believe, are available to be able to cover costs. This is mandated from New York State. Again, based on information we have at this time, we feel that that is acceptable, and if we need to move funds, we move them again. Students move in and out of our district at all times. There is no regulation either with regard to special education funds not being allowed to transfer. Federal funds are a different story, but special education funds in the general fund budget can be transferred as needed.
So currently, it will not have a negative effect at this time?
As of today.
Thank you.
7.1, oh, wait, we have to vote on that. All those in favor? Unanimous. We had a motion and a second, and then discussion. Okay? Is it okay, right? All right, all those in favor? Unanimous. 7.13.
One, two.
I'm sorry, one, two. Excuse me. Approval of change orders, snow removal station at Van Wyck Junior High School Bus Parking Lot.
Resolved that the Board of Education approve change order number E.1-014, Van Wyck Snow Sweeper Electric Service at a cost of $16,043.71, as per memo dated October 31, 2016, from the school district's architect to the director of facilities and operations, and recommended by the superintendent of schools.
Do we have a motion? Mrs. Pelton, second. Mr. Lumia. Discussion. Mr. Lumia.
Ron, is the snow sweeper, as far as the grass sweepers, or is it bus sweepers?
It's for the bus tops.
Well, I thought that the sweeper for the bus was supposed to be located at the first capital project at Fisker Plains. Why the change?
We moved it there because we had more room to remove the snow at Van Wyck than we did at Fisker Plains, because Fisker Plains was a tight site.
Okay.
Mr. Rubin.
So when you say move, that means it's now taken out of one facility and moved to the other. We don't have it in these two facilities.
We have it at Van Wyck facility, where most of your big buses are out.
But it's not at the Fisker Plains?
Not at the Fisker Plains.
So those buses which need to be swept at Fisker Plains had to go to a Van Wyck to get the snow to move?
Well, the ones that Fisker Plains can go to Van Wyck to get the snow removed, yes. It's just that Fisker Plains is such a tight site, and if we had a major snowstorm, there would be no place to move the snow.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? All those in favor? 8.01, Approval of Change to Start Times.
Whereas in order to more efficiently transport district students to their assigned schools, the district desires to restructure its current three-tier transportation system into a two-tier system, which would necessitate changes to school start times. Whereas studies have shown that later start times provide secondary students with more opportunities for success, while earlier start times for elementary students have been shown to better correlate with the sleep cycles of the younger students. And whereas goals of student safety and realizing more time for extracurricular activities for the elementary students would be promoted by later start times for secondary students and earlier start times for elementary students. Be resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves changes to the start times for the high schools, junior high schools, and elementary schools as follows. Students will enter the high schools and junior high schools at 7:25 a.m. for the beginning of their school day, and students at the elementary schools will enter at 8:25 a.m. for the beginning of their school day.
Do we have a motion? Mr. Lumia, second. Mr. Galetta? All right, discussion. I think it might be helpful if we go around the board and have one brief question or a short comment by each member, and then if there's additional time, we can go around again. All right, Mr. Galetta? Okay, Mr. Lumia?
Do we have a guarantee that kids will not be running on the bus longer than they're presently doing? That's number one. Number two, will students be losing any educational time, classroom time, with a two-tier bus system?
Mrs. Brandl? Mr. Rubin? Okay.
The change in start time doesn't dictate or mandate a change in bus routing. That's the first thing I would say. And then with regards to student schedule, the entire school day will be shifted by 25 minutes, in the case of the high school 25 minutes forward, for example. So all the periods, if, you know, nothing else changing in the two-tier proposal, the schedule and the time of instruction stays exactly the same.
My last question. Are we guaranteed we can have enough buses in the event that a bus breaks down in a two-tier system?
Mrs. Brandl?
Yes, we will. We will have enough vehicles in a two-tier system to support our vehicles. Nope, backwards. We will have enough vehicles to support a two-tier system. In the event of breakdown, in the event of illnesses, we will be fine.
Mrs. Goodman?
Having read the comments of the high school students who really like more sleep at the beginning of the day and don't like having enough time to nap at the end of the day, overall, I would say that the comments from the high school students were fairly non, were fairly accepting, and the survey results show the same thing. We've also gotten some positive feedback from parents that it will help their family schedules when they have students at different schools, when all the schools are on the same timetable. And at least nine out of 10 schools, nine out of 10 elementary schools seem to benefit from the earlier closing in terms of extracurricular activities. So overall, I mean, that's new information that we just basically got tonight, and overall, I think it looks, personally, I think it looks pretty positive.
Mr. Rubin?
They've already said that.
Okay, Mrs. Karat?
Yes, I'd echo Mrs. Goodman. I think one thing that we haven't really given a lot of thought to is that with the later times, I'm, since this is my second year on the board, I have come from last year's presentations to the opinion that the elementary schools are, at their current scheduling, are missing out from a number of reasons. I don't think we realize how much parent pickup is taking place, not to mention something that I think we haven't discussed enough, which is extra help. It's extra instruction after school, and I have always been a big proponent of our schools taking care of extra help and not private tutoring after school, that type of situation. So it's more of the time that will be afforded elementary students for extra help, extra work time, and then just to continue to promote after-school activities the way they truly should be. You know, there will be changes for everyone, and I thank all the parents that took the time and community residents that took the time to respond to this. It really shows me that everyone is engaged in their school district, and I think that's so valuable. But these elementary schools deserve more time at the end of the day. So in order to do that, we have to shift and shift the morning, but we also are aligning our high schools and junior highs with other districts. So it's not just athletics that are going to benefit from this. It's also any extracurricular clubs that interface with other school districts. It's promoting more of that. So those are the things that I think we really will do well to address by passing.
Mr. Slowshower?
Just too quick for clarification and a comment. I know we, a question I had asked is why the resolution does not have an end time to it, just to get the clarification on that. The other thing is, I know that some information went out to the high school parents with regards to the 9th period day, and I just want to confirm that there's a typo in there for the start time, because the PowerPoint that went out has a 7:08 start time, and I'm assuming that's a typo in that report that went out.
The title of that particular report starts with the word scenario. It was a scenario.
I'm just clarifying, because they've got calls and emails, so the committee members were concerned about, you know, the time didn't...
There was a scenario of how in apples-to-apples comparison of a 8th period day would line up versus a 9th period day in the current confines.
Thank you. In reviewing the student survey that went out, needless to say, slightly disappointed that we only received 333 responses. I do believe we did try to do an update because we did have some technology issues there originally, which was not at fault of the district, but through, I guess, the vendor that we were using. You know, with 3,000, 4,000 students, it's a very low response, and I was very concerned about what the students' interpretation would be of this. And reading through the comments of at least those 333 students that did respond to the survey, there's an overwhelming response here of not making this change by the students. And if you read some of their comments, less time for work, less time to do homework, unable to take care of family responsibilities, siblings, doctor's appointments, having family, can't afford babysitters, I'm not able to finish my homework, they don't have enough time, impedes my practice, change my work schedule. There's countless comments that are repetitive here that it seems, from my interpretation of these comments, that the majority of these students, if not 75% to 80% of them, have an issue with the change in times, and it does affect them personally. Jobs, family obligations, taking care of their brothers and sisters, less time for homework, not being able to get the practice on time, not being able to get the work on time, and things of that nature. And I think this, you know, it affects the students, and I think their responses really need to be taken into consideration, you know, when we make this determination if this is what we want to do, because that's who this truly affects. And I think possibly we may need to, you know, maybe it's not the right time to make this decision, because the majority of these students don't seem to feel that they're going to receive the benefit. And I know there are some positive responses in here. Don't get me wrong, I'm not trying to tell everybody everything in here was one way. But from what I read through this, overwhelmingly, it looks like the students that participated in this survey are not in favor of this particular time change at this time.
Mrs. Pelton?
Just quickly, I'd like to say that oftentimes, people who participate in a survey are people who oppose a survey. The 333 responses, when there's thousands, might indicate that people that are replying with it did not respond. There are several that say no impact, but beyond these 333 responses, I just wanted to say I sincerely appreciate it, all the input from stakeholders, building administrators, teachers, parents, members of the community. I think that we have phenomenal feedback with regard to the time changes.
I think there, from my point of view, there are three main issues, considerations here. The first is safety, and this change will mean that we do not have high school students waiting for the bus or walking to the bus stop in total darkness. It will be, at best, at worst, dark. And we will not have elementary school students being dropped off after dark. And this is a real, several years ago, a student was killed in the morning walking to her bus stop in total darkness, and this is a very important consideration. Secondly, having taught both elementary school and high school, I know that elementary school children are up with the birds, and they're very alert and eager to learn early in the morning, and by mid-afternoon, they're fading, and they really need to get out and play and do those extracurricular activities. High school students, on the other hand, because of the changes in their circadian clock, have a great deal of trouble waking up in the morning, and the first couple of periods of the day are a struggle when they're before 9 o'clock. Ideally, we would change, we would be able to make bigger changes. Unfortunately, we can't switch the elementary and secondary schedules because of the constraints that has been pointed out to us of private parochial schools, start times, and of the interscholastic athletic programs that stretch across five counties to some of our schools. I understand and I sympathize with the feelings of the parents at Myers Corners. I taught at Myers Corners, and it's an ideal schedule for elementary school students. But we have 10 elementary schools, and we have to try to look to the greater good of the greater number. Finally, $250,000 is not pocket change. That's a, 280, I've seen both numbers, but Mrs. Brandl can tell us which it is. But whether it's 250,000 or 280,000, we could do a great deal for the students, especially in the extracurricular areas, with that money. Think of all the band instruments, the extra entriborals, and on and on and on that could be provided with that money. So this is not a trivial sum. Thank you.
You mentioned also about safety. The superintendent has talked about how it would help if much in cold snow days.
Yes, that is very true. Thank you for adding that, Mr. Rubin. All right, our time seems to be up, so unless someone wishes to extend the time. Mrs. Brandl, did you want to clarify for us on that 250,000 or 280,000? I realize you can't be exact because things change.
280 was our original estimate.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Yes, okay. All right, I believe we already had the motion and the seconds and the discussion, so all we need to do now is vote. All those in favor of the start time change? Mr. Galetta, Mr. Lumia, Mrs. Goodman, Mr. Rubin, Mrs. Callen, Mrs. Karat, Mrs. Pelton, opposed. Abstention? Mr. Slowshower? 9.01, Approval of Agreement with East Fischkill Police Department and Fischkill Plains and Gayhead Elementary Schools.
Resolved that the Board of Education does hereby approve the agreement between the Wapentures Central School District and the East Fischkill Police Department to present the drug and violence prevention program to the fifth-grade students of the Fischkill Plains and Gayhead Elementary Schools.
Motion? Mrs. Pelton, second. Mrs. Goodman, discussion. All those in favor? Unanimous. 9.02, Discussion and Approval of Letter to Legislators Local Assistance Plan Designation for Wapentures Junior High School.
Resolved that the Board of Education of the Wapentures Central School District does hereby approve the attached letter addressed to the legislators concerning the local assistance plan designation for the Wapentures Junior High School as drafted by the Legislative Action Committee as stated.
All right, can we have a motion? Mr. Slowshower? Second, Mrs. Goodman. All right, discussion and questions, and perhaps we could refer those questions to Mr. Slowshower and Mrs. Goodman as members of the committee. Mr. Galetta? It's in the papers.
So I have some concerns, Mr..
Yeah.
I have some concerns with this letter. This letter includes speculation, assumptions, and accusations that are unnecessary and not helpful. I don't think it reflects the way our school district should be presenting itself. If this board decides to send a letter to our legislators with concerns about the accountability system, it should stick to the facts and address the concerns in a professional manner, as was presented by our administration in our district appeal to the State Education Department on this matter. It's interesting to me that some of our Legislative Action Committee members that have been encouraging the opt-out movement take part in drafting a letter to our legislators that accuses the state of using so-called flawed data in determining that Wapentures Junior High School is in need of a local assistance plan based on the high number of students that opted out of the assessment. On top of that, this same letter indicates that if the opt-out students would have taken the test, it's more than likely Wapentures Junior High School would not be designated as a LIP school. If some parents choose to refuse to allow their children to take the state assessment, for whatever reason, that's up to them. But there are consequences for our actions and the decisions we made. Not long ago, our school district celebrated the fact that John Jay High School received the prestigious New York State Rewards School Designation. It's still on the John Jay website homepage. For those of you who may not know, John Jay received this Rewards School Designation through the same accountability system that designated Wapentures Junior High School as needing a local assistance plan, and that this Legislative Action Committee letter is now calling flawed and absurd. So we celebrate the system when it recognizes that we are doing something good, but we criticize the same system when it recognizes that something is wrong. Our district appeal to the state presented our concerns in an appropriate and professional manner. This Legislative Action Committee letter does not. I do not support sending this letter to our legislators.
Any other comments?
First, I'd like to echo the Chair, Mr. Slowshower, compliment to a... First, I'd like to echo the Chair, Mr. Slowshower, compliment to Amanda Sint, who wrote the draft of the letter, which we then worked on together. And the interesting thing is that I'd be more than willing to, you know, I think we'd all be willing to have suggestions to make it less inflammatory, okay?
It's lying!
Excuse me?
It was a group effort.
The second thing...
It's a group effort.
Please, there should be no comments from the audience at this time.
Then the board cannot lie. Also, it was a group effort.
Both Amanda and I were both, had problems going to that meeting, but we presented the draft.
Please, please, Mrs. Ryan, if you would like to say anything at the end of the meeting, you're more than welcome to, but please do not interrupt.
It's an incorrect report to the public.
All right, please, will you please let quiet and let Mrs. Goodman finish? You will have a turn at the end of the meeting.
As long as it's honest, I'm happy to.
I don't think she, we've heard the whole day comments from here, so before you feel that it's incorrect, please listen to everything people have to say. Thank you. Mrs. Goodman.
Thank you. I was not at the meeting, so I don't know what other additions the group made. I agree with you conceptually that factual is best. I would also like to point out, though, that the language in talking about the skewed results of the poor data of that one group, the white students, came from the district's appeal written by Mr. Carrion, okay? And I quite honestly think that that's perfectly appropriate. The other thing I'd like to point out is in the next-to-last paragraph of the letter, we point out that the large number of white students opting out is not enough cause to force Wapentures Junior High School and the district to jump through hoops. We cannot force parents to do something they believe is not in the best interests of their children. So we do recognize the opt-out issue, okay? I had a question about the last paragraph, and Trustee Slowshower, maybe you can answer it for me. The original draft asked our state legislators as well to intervene with the State Education Department to see if they could get us a waiver. That language has been changed and broadened and softened to the idea that we're just asking the legislators to, we're asking our legislators to bring this type of situation to the attention of the rest of the legislature. I'm curious as to the reason for the change, and that's it. That was, that was my question.
Okay, Mr. Slowshower.
Just to go back to your concern, Mr. Galetta, with regards to the paragraph that Trustee Goodman just stated, that information and that language, although we tweaked it very little, came from our superintendent. And superintendent provided us with his thoughts and his input into this letter, and we took a lot of that information and incorporated it into the letter from the original draft done by Ms. Goodman and Ms. Sint. So kind of the areas that you were concerned with is, again, stating that, you know, certain committee members, because of their particular beliefs in opting out, this particular language came from our superintendent. And we utilized, and we presented him with a copy of the original, well, not the original, but the original first rough draft, and he came back with numerous recommendations. So the information with regards to the white students, that particular data, and the reasoning as Trustee Goodman just stated was part of the appeal process, that language was crafted by our superintendent, and the committee reached consensus to incorporate that in with our language. So that particular language was not originally created by members, certain members or all members of the committee. That was based on recommendations made by our superintendent, and we felt it to be very important information to include in this particular letter. With regards to the last, I don't have the original rough rough draft, I don't think we had changed that, and Madam President, who was with us that evening, perhaps she could recall a little bit better, I don't think we really changed too much of the wording to that last paragraph. And yes, I agree with you, the idea is for our local politicians to speak with members of theirs, you know, co-members of the Assembly and the Senate. The direction to go in to try to appeal the appeal, in discussions, we felt that was not going to really do any good, because we're not writing this letter back to New York State Ed, asking them to once again reconsider the appeal that was denied. The point that we were trying to make out was to utilize our local politicians to make them aware of what has transpired in this district and have them educate or have discussions with their fellow Assemblymen and Senators.
As Mr. Slowshower said, yes, I was there also, and we looked at the basic letter, excellent rough draft presented by Mrs. Goodman and Mrs. Sint, neither of whom, because of health reasons, were able to come that night. And we also looked at the many changes and additions presented to us suggested by Mr. Carrion. And the entire committee worked on it together, and we were quite in agreement, and we had good, good input from all community members, Mr. Slowshower and myself, and the student members. And basically, we incorporated Mr. Carrion's suggestions into the rough draft, and the only changes we made, really, were grammatical or particular vocabulary and tightening it up and making it a little shorter. And as you see, we put some of the things that, that had been mentioned in the original rough draft or Mr. Carrion's information as an exhibit A afterwards, because we wanted to have a fairly brief letter so that the legislators or their legislative aides might actually read more than the first sentence. And so we tried to make it compact. But it was, it was basically what had been suggested and recommended to us by the administration. Thank you. Mr. Lumia.
The superintendent said, by rewriting the flow standards, he actually said that? Point of order, Mr. President, Madam President, we've reached that 10 minutes.
Oh, the 10 minutes are up. Did anyone wish to extend the discussion? We have a motion for Mr. Lumia, a second by Mr. Galetta. Do you have a time of how long you would like to extend it, Mr. Lumia?
I mean, we'll be like, wait, is that myself?
Mr. Graff, Mr....
10 minutes.
10 minutes? All right, all those, are you agreeable, Mr. Galetta, Mr. Sint? How many are in favor extending discussion to 10 minutes? Mr. Galetta, Mr. Lumia, Mrs. Goodman, Mrs. Callen, Mrs. Karath, Mr. Slowshower, Mrs. Pelton, opposed? Mr. Rubin? All right, 10 minutes. Mr. Rubin.
The sentence, I'm not sure whether the superintendent approved it or not, I wish he was here. Is the board saying that by rewriting the flow, that we agree that the standards are flawed? Does the board education say that?
What is that?
That's the nonsense.
Is that the what is...
Standards.
Uh, second page, first paragraph, second page, second, second sentence.
Mr. Slowshower, do you have a copy of Mr. Carrion's says additions?
I do not, but I do...
Well, I'm asking very simply here. I'm sorry.
I do believe, yeah, we did not make that many edits to his recommendation, because he provided us with that particular information.
The last paragraph.
Okay, yes, wait a minute, Mrs. Goodman, Mr. Lakima wants to say something on behalf of the superintendent, and then you. Yes.
Thank you. Now, unfortunately, I can't speak exactly to the quote that you're asking about, but I, but he did want me to share, you know, if the topic would come up to discuss that, you know, he did participate beyond this letter with being able to provide feedback to the state through various venues. Not only was he one of the only, if not the only, perhaps, Dutchess County School District Superintendent to go to Albany and advocate for, for positive change with the legislation, he also was a participant in the Lower Hudson Council, who was actively pursuing their own enforcement or creation of a letter and a document to send to the state to advocate for change in the laws. And then now, for myself, I just want to add, I just want to add one thing in terms of a point of curiosity to a comment that Mr. Galetta made with regards to John J. and with regards to it being a reward school. We're very proud of that, of course, but it only became a reward school after the Obama administrative changes went through to No Child Left Behind. Under No Child Left Behind and the previous accountability system, John J., as well as many of our other schools in the district, were designated a school in need of improvement. And John J. was persistently on that list of a school in need of improvement, even though they still maintain wonderful graduation rates and high academic results on region's exams. They couldn't get away from that designation, but it was curious that with the change of the waiver to how the Obama administration allowed us to change the accountability system, how that changed and how we looked at that very same data, in fact, actually changed the designation of that school from a school in need of improvement. We had a grace period of no accountability designations for about a year or two, and then became now on the other side of it, a reward school. So I would like to at least just, just share in terms of, obviously, we're on the cusp of one more great change, and that is with, with E.S.S.A., the Every Student Succeeds Act, and the knowledge that, that the accountability system is going to change once again with all new criteria, that could, of course, once again, have an impact on how our schools are designated, and the fact that we are a school with a local assistance plan, that designation could very well just go away once they rewrite the accountability standards. And I just, I just want to share that. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Galetta, oh, Mrs. Goodman, I think you had her earlier, first, and Mr. Galetta. Mrs. Goodman.
First, Mr. Lakima, your comment that it could, might well go away is the heart of why we feel we need to write, why we felt that the letter should be written. That, is that...
No, no.
Sorry. Okay. Is, is the reason that actually I proposed to the board that we return this matter over to the legislative committee to come up with a letter? It seems ridiculous to ask the district to spend money, time, and resources on something that's really going, that's possibly going away. I understand, and I actually agree, that some of the language, especially in the first paragraph on the second page, the last two sentences, is strong. It was written strongly to reflect the sensibilities of members of the committee. However, the board has the final say, and there's absolutely, from my perspective, nothing wrong from taking out words that make it insulting or unprofessional. For example, we can remove the word flawed by rewriting the standards and delaying assessments. The state has now signaled their parents were reasonable, that had a reason to be concerned. It does not, we can take out the word flawed everywhere, and it would still make sense, it would be more factual, and for whatever reason, it doesn't, it's not, the letter doesn't live or die by using that word. The other thing, again, I understand what you were saying, and I was not, and it's true, I was not there. I don't know, and other people, and Mr. Lakima, you might be able to help me with this, too. Is it inappropriate to ask a member of the state legislature to interfere, to intervene in the bureaucracy, to lobby in the bureaucracy for constituents? Because that's really what I had hoped this letter would do. And if it's, if it's, if it's inappropriate, then the change of language in the last paragraph is, it makes sense. But again, I mean, you need to ask people to do something, and to me, the purpose of writing the letter was to get action on the part of our legislators, since the bureaucracy won't address this issue and is focused on a literal application of the accountability of standards, then perhaps our legislator could take it up a notch. That was my original hope in asking. Did the committee come to a conclusion that that was not appropriate? Because if that's the case, that's the committee's decision, and that's the end of it.
Mr. Slowshower.
The committee came to a, I would say, 100% consensus on this version of the letter. And although the students were not participating to vote, they acknowledged that they were happy with the language, as all committee members felt. They were comfortable with the language. Again, the committee was comfortable with this letter, representing it, obviously, to the board. And again, information given to us by the superintendent and language used by the superintendent in his, I want to say, rough draft that he prepared, but in his, let's say, along with his exhibits, his information based on the appeal, and I guess he put his thoughts into it as well, I don't want to say he was advocating one way or the other, we incorporated his thoughts, his language, his writings into what the committee, the members of the committee submitted to you, and we basically put everything up on the board, and we went through everything. We consolidated a couple of things, a couple of things were repetitive, and that was the direction that we took, and that was the consensus reached by the committee.
Mr. Galetta.
So the E.S.S.A. flexibility waiver changed, changed the accountability system for all schools at the same time. So the, so comparing apples to apples, the John J. Rewards School Designation was designated under the same system that Wapentures Junior High School was designated under, for the current L.A.P.
For different criteria.
For different criteria, I understand, right? Because one's a high school, one's, one's a junior high. I'm sure Mr. Carrion contributed, or I imagine he contributed to, to the letter. I would guess that his contribution would be more factual. My concern is some of the accusations and the assumptions and the rhetoric in this letter. For instance, this, it says, "Parents of Wapentures Junior High School students who opted out of tests in the 14th, 15th school year chose to do so because they felt the standards and assessments as existed were detrimental to their children." Now, I don't know if somebody talked to all the parents of the children that opted out of those students and found out that that's the reason why they opted their students out. I've heard many reasons, ranging from some parents felt, you know, they were afraid it was going to affect the teacher's evaluation system, that some parents thought the test is optional because it was such, there's such a widespread misunderstanding of the whole, of the whole process. So, you know, my concern, I think we should present this in factual information and steer clear of the extra rhetoric that is more of opinion.
Yes, Mrs. Pelton.
I just, I want to say ultimately, I think the goal is to remove this label. This label is creating a significant barrier that, as the letter states, does prevent us from, from, from meeting the actual needs of the students. It seems that it is the second paragraph on the second page that is, is causing the controversy at the table right now. But I think it's really important to look at what the goal is and, and the best way to achieve that goal. And is that second paragraph necessary in achieving that goal or not?
Could, does someone want to make an amendment, changing the wording of some of the wording in that second paragraph on the second page? Mrs. Goodman and Mr. Galetta mentioned certain things there, and perhaps it could be edited, but after all, this is, was the committee's suggestion to the board, but the board could certainly make amendments here to the letter. Mrs. Goodman suggested before removing the word flawed. Mr. Galetta suggested removing the, the detrimental, why people chose to opt out. If either of you wish to make some amendments about that that are acceptable to the board. Mr. Galetta? Mr. Galetta.
I have enough concerns with this letter that I don't think spending the amount of time necessary tonight is justified. Number one, I don't think, number two, I don't think we have to rush to send this out this week. I mean, it, it is, I would let, I'm making a motion to refer this back to committee to have another look at it and, and make revisions based on factual information.
Okay, well, we still had a motion on the floor about considering this, so are you making a, a motion now to table it or to refer it to committee?
Refer back, I believe that takes precedence.
Yes, that does. Okay, we need a second for that. Mr. Lumia. All those in favor of referring the letter back to committee? Mr. Galetta, Mr. Lumia, all those opposed? Mrs. Goodman, Mr. Ruben, Mrs. Kellen, Mrs. Karath, Mr. Slowshower, and Mrs. Pelton. So I think we're still discussing it. Yes, Mrs. Goodman.
Madam President, I would also like to propose a motion to table this for at least two weeks, so that board members have more of a chance to read it and to suggest changes. That, because this is, these are now board objections. It no longer belongs, I don't think, in the committee. This is what the committee has presented to the board. If the board has objections to it, which I'm not going to disagree with in any way, shape, or form, then I would urge members of the board to come back in two weeks with a discussion of proposed edits. Three weeks, that's right.
Point of order, that we have reached the time, so in order to go further, we would need to do something else.
All right, first, we need to, if anyone wishes to extend discussion, we could, or we can deal with the motion to table for, till the next meeting that Mrs. Goodman just presented.
We have to deal with this motion.
Okay, yes, well, that, to table in this motion. Yeah, she put table, table in a motion, it takes precedence, doesn't it, Mrs. Pedra?
I think the point of order.
Okay, point of order, all right. Mr. Ruben, point of order. To extend discussion?
One minute.
Okay, Mr. Lumia extended discussion one minute, Mr. Galetta seconded. How many are in favor of extending discussion for one minute? Okay, Mr. Galetta, Mr. Lumia, Mrs. Goodman, Mrs. Kellen, Mrs. Karath, Mr. Slowshower, Mrs. Pelton, they extended discussion for one minute, and you want to present your motion to table, Mrs. Goodman? You said it?
Yeah, I, I have a motion to table this for three weeks. And I don't know how to do this with, with appropriate parliamentary procedure, but with the request that if the board has suggestions for improvement, that the next meeting, the next time we discuss this, that we devote time to room, to work ways to improve the letter.
Okay, second? Mr., are you seconded?
Yeah, because I have a comment.
I think you have to second.
I have to amend to that, that you want to amend.
Amendment? Can you make an amendment to a, a, a motion to table?
No, you have to accept it. It's frozen.
Can we get the letter from the superintendent? That's all I wanted to know. Let's get a copy of what the superintendent sent, so that we can compare.
You can request that separately.
You can request that separately. First, let's, was that a second to table? Okay, how many in favor of tabling the motion till the next board meeting? Okay, Mr. Galetta, Mr. Lumia, Mrs. Goodman, Mrs. Kellen, Mrs. Karath, Mr. Slowshower, Mrs. Pelton, opposed? Mr. Ruben, and would you like to make your suggestion, Mr. Lumia?
Before the next board meeting, can we have a letter that the superintendent sent to the state legislator regarding this particular topics, we can compare exactly what he said and what this letter says.
Can I just make a correction?
Sure.
That letter, Mr. Carrion did not send a letter to the state legislature. Mr. Carrion provided his comments and material to the committee to, giving his opinion.
On this letter.
Into this letter. He, he did not send the letter out, just so I can be clear. He provided the committee.
I would like to have the comment that the superintendent made to the committee.
That's fine.
Thank you. That doesn't really need a vote, does it? All right, thank you. 10.01, are there any amendments to the agenda? Discussion items or requests for information? Okay, Mr. Ruben.
Just a comment that I'd like to say that in terms of this letter, that we all have our opinions on what constitutes a good letter, a bad letter. I think when I personally, when I looked at this letter, the positives outweighed the negatives, and as a result of committees actually in town with that committee, I think they did a good handle of the job.
They certainly put a lot of time and effort into it, looked at it with care. All right, yes. And thank you, thank you especially to Mrs. Goodman and Mrs. Sin, who made the rough draft, to Mr. Carrion, who looked over it also, and to all the people who attended the committee meeting and put their input into it also. And the next meeting, by then, we'll have seen the two separate, the entire board will have seen the separate submissions by Mrs. Goodman and Mrs. Sin and by Mr. Carrion, and then they could compare it to the final product of the committee and have any other suggestions of their own for what they think would be better. That would be good. All right, were there any additions to the agenda? Seeing none, 11.01, comments from the public.
I don't even think I need this mic. I am absolutely disgusted. I don't know why we have board members that the community votes for, that they just don't have the brass ones to get up and disagree with another board member. What is wrong with you? Why can't one challenge another? That's what you're sitting there for. You're not going to question anything? Then sit back here and get off that chair. Your jobs are to challenge.
Point of order, Madam Chairman?
Yes. Yes, for, comments do not include criticism.
I didn't use any names, just so you know. I'm following the proof.
My point of order, my point of order, that is that communication from the board goes two ways, both from the board.
This is public comment, and you're interrupting me right now. Thank you very much.
And you are a street.
You are rude. Don't be that way, since I had to listen to you be rude. It's my turn. My point of order is P O O.
Wait a second. It's Mrs. Ryan's turn, and there should not be comments from the board back and forth, but at the same time, Mrs. Ryan, please remember that we don't make personal comments about any people.
I didn't.
Or, all right, and we don't discuss extrament either, no matter what the language. Thank you.
Now, P O O is point of order. Okay? Just so you know what it is.
Okay.
But now, there's an elective board up there that's supposed to represent the community. And if, why can't one challenge another? That's your job. That's for starters. Secondly, this letter was written because a school and a district is now being, they're being detrimented because of them wanting to use the school to make an example out of it. Now, if there's a flawed curriculum that is flawed by 60% that our state admitted to, then why is it okay for any child to have to sit for the same tests that are 60% flawed when they're based on them? I don't understand that. And why is it acceptable for any student to sit and learn these curriculums that are so heavily flawed? Why is that okay? And why is it not okay for that same curriculum and the tests based on that curriculum not be used against teachers, but they can be used against the kids in the school? Why is that okay? The basis of this letter is to show our legislators where the abuses lie within the state. It's the overreach. It's a matter of it making sense, and it doesn't make sense. If you can't use it against, against teacher evaluations, then how can you use it against students? How is that fair? And it is a parent's right, and it always will be, to make a decision for their student whether they sit for a test or they don't. And that's a fact, and it will not change. Thank you.
Are there any other people who wish to make a comment at this time? Seeing none, do we have a longer book? Excuse me. A motion to adjourn? Mrs. Pelton? Second? Mr. Ruben?
All in favor?